Welcome to the Goodyear City Council Meeting. We're excited to have you be a part of this important public process. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to address City Council on both non-agenda and agenda items. The agendas and the speaker request cards are located on the tables outside of council chambers. You must fill out a speaker card in order to address the City Council. Please hand in your completed card to the city clerk before the start of the meeting. If the meeting has already begun, please hand it to any city staff. You may also check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. This allows you to still voice your opinion on an item on the record without having to Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don't appear on tonight's formal agenda. The city clerk will call your name when it's time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and state your name for the record. We ask that you speak clearly into the microphone. You'll have a maximum of three minutes, and there is a timer visible from the podium. When the light changes from green to yellow, your time is coming to an end. When the light turns red, your time is up. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated, and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear City Council meetings stream live on Facebook and YouTube and online at Goodyearaz.gov. Thank you for your participation in tonight's meeting.
I'd like to call to order the regular meeting for December 16, 2019. Please join Councilmember Laura Tonno in the Pledge Allegiance and Invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Dear Lord, during this season of peace and joy, we thank you for the blessings that you have bestowed upon our community in the last year. We ask for your love and guidance to help us have the wisdom as we forge a path into a prosperous 2020. We ask for your protection and grace for those in our community and their families, here and far away, and those that serve in our community and abroad. We ask for your guidance and protection as we move forward. Bless all of all religions and nations and ask for peace and goodwill. In your name, amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Laura Tonno. All right, we're going to go to the communications, and we have one item tonight. I will read a proclamation to recognize the January as Speak Up, Stand Up, and Save a Life Month. Will Joseph Ortiz and Gina Gottsir please come forward for the proclamation? Stand Up, excuse me, Speak Up, Stand Up, and Save a Life Month, January 20th. Whereas the Speak Up, Stand Up, Save a Life Campaign is an opportunity for government, law enforcement, and members of our local community to come together to support the kids. By teaching students in local schools to identify and report warning signs and cries for help, whether at school, after school, or on social media, we can prevent unnecessary tragedies and make our communities safer for every child. Whereas Speak Up, Stand Up, Save a Life Campaign educates and empowers the youth to report concerning behavior, posts, comments, and other indicators of distress to school representatives, law enforcement, or other authority figures who can help. More than anything, youth needs to know that it's okay to speak up, to stand up, and possibly save a life. Whereas on January 21, 2020, thousands of students from the Phoenix Metro Area Schools will come together to hear this important message and bring it back to their schools and communities where they can influence a positive change. As part of this month, I encourage all schools, parents, educators, law enforcement, and community leaders to embrace and share this message and learn how they can help make our communities safer for all children. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Georgia Lord Mayor of the City of Goodyear, Arizona, do proclaim the month of January 2020 as Speak Up, Stand Up, and Save a Life Month. And I ask all residents to join me in encouraging youth to take action with their peers who are in need of need and partnering with our local leaders in the simple, life-changing intervention. Given under my hand in these free United States and the City of Goodyear, Arizona, on the 16th day of December 2019, to which I have caused the seal of the City of Goodyear to be affixed and have made this proclamation public. First of all, I want to thank both of you because it's very important. We're going to have a council come down and take a picture of us, but first, I'm going to give you a moment if you'd like to say something.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to all the council. When we started this conference three years ago, this is going to be our fourth year, we started in the West Valley, and it has been a grassroots-growing effort, and we've grown from 28 schools to over 150 schools. And none of that would be possible without all the support of all of our municipalities. Reading the proclamation helps us give awareness to this important issue, and we thank you because it's needed. Every day, we're hearing about children whose lives are being saved, and we're losing a child to suicide, if you don't know, one child every, I'm hearing almost every 4.5 days. 5.5 wasn't bad enough, now it's 4.5 days. And what our goal for Speak Up, Stand Up is to educate every parent, teacher, and child of what the universal warning signs are, that one of their classmates could be in trouble. And then we're trying to empower them to tell a trusted adult. So thank you for helping us get this awareness out, and we would be honored if you are free on the January 21st, or any member of your council could please join us. And we're very grateful for the support of your law enforcement with the City of Goodyear who have been with us from the beginning. So we thank you for all your support and leadership.
(applause)
Next, we have the appointments to the Police Public Safety Personnel Retirement Board, and our city clerk, Darcy McCracken, will give this to Officer Eric Webster.
Good evening, Mayor and council. The Police Public Safety Personnel Retirement Board had a member resign in November. The police department conducted a call for interested parties and then held an election, and Eric Webster was actually selected by the members of the police department to be on the board. Since the person who resigned had less than a year left in his term, this appointment will begin a new term of four years. And with that recommendation is to appoint Eric Webster for a four-year term.
Very good. Eric, would you like to say anything before she swears you in on this and we'll vote on it?
No, I appreciate your time. I think it's a very important, you know, committee that needs to be worked, you know, for the benefit of the city as well as the members. So I'm very honored to be on that.
Well, that's great. All right, council, I need a motion in a second to approve the recommended appointment. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Cano and a second from Vice Mayor Stip. So before we vote, is there any discussion? Well, I'd like to say a discussion. Eric, I've known you for a long time. You worked with a good friend of mine, and you both did an outstanding job. And so it's nice to see that you're on this very responsible board. So, all right, guys, for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the ayes have it. The city clerk now will administer the oath of loyalty.
Okay, we're going to use this instead of the portable mic. So raise your right hand, repeat after me, and say your name.
Aye, Eric Webster.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of board member.
Discharge the duties of board member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So I do affirm.
So I do affirm.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Now is a time for citizens who would like to address the City Council on any non-agenda item within the jurisdiction of this Goodyear City Council. Do we have any cards?
No, Mayor.
Does anybody in the audience want to speak? Since there's no speaker cards, we'll go on to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read Consent Agenda Items 3 through 5 by title only?
Number 3, Approval of Minutes. Number 4, Approve the Fiscal Year 2020 Budget Transfers. Number 5, Approve the Hudson Commons Parcel 2 Phase 1 Final Plaid.
Thank you. Does the council wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? All right, then I need a motion in a second. So I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Stip and a second from Councilman Pizzillo to approve the Items 3 through 5. So roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tonno?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Great. There is one public hearing on the agenda. This public hearing item to receive comments on the development impact fees that were posted on October 2019, 2019. I'm opening a public hearing, and we have Finance Manager, Budget Researcher Lori Wiganroff presenting. Lori?
Thank you. Let me get the presentation up here. As, thank you all for letting me come and talk to you again, and we're here continuing our process on the impact fees.
Can I stop, Lori? That microphone is not very loud, so can we either turn it up or pull it closer?
I can try it there. I'll lean in.
That's much better.
(laughing) We are, as you know, we're in the process to extend the impact fees into further south in the city. We've been going through a process for a little over a year now to complete this task. Just a quick overview is, we'll go through this a little bit more, but we're going through extending an existing fee into those areas. Only police, fire, and streets are the areas that we're having service in the impact fees for them. And water, wastewater, and parks, should there be development down there, those types of infrastructure would be the responsibility of the developer as opposed to through the impact fees. Oops, I will... Just to give you an idea of what we're doing, up on the map, the area, the tan, tannish color, and the blue areas are areas where we currently have impact fees, and the little green area at the bottom is the area that we're incorporating impact fees into in this process. And kind of just give you a closer view of what that area, it's being called the Northwest Rainbow Valley area as we're extending the impact fees into there. Just to give you a reminder of what the fees are, the fees are not changing from the current plan. We're extending the same infrastructure into this area. So as a result, just here are your single-family fees. You'll notice that we're showing that in the update, the plan, the fees stay the same in the south area, and we're showing what the fees will be in the Northwest Rainbow Valley area. And again, those fees are lower because there's no water, wastewater, or parks fees in that area. And as we went through the last impact fee process, we also used three examples of non-residential type properties. So here again, you can see the office, industrial, and retail examples, what the current fees are in the south, that those fees will not be changing, and what they would be for those types of properties if they developed in the Northwest Rainbow Valley area. And today, we're doing the required public hearing. I'll be back late in January for you to adopt the fees, and then the fees would become effective 60 days after you adopt them. And with that, I'll answer your questions, or you can hold your public hearing.
Thank you, Lori. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. Would anybody in the audience like to speak? I'm going to close the public hearing. No vote is needed on this item at this time, as Lori just spoke. And I'd like to remind council now to go to the business section, and thank you, Lori. Remind council to wait for a motion in a second before discussion on the business. And so we'll start with number 7 on business, is Consider Preliminary Plaid for Goodyear Civic Square Parcel B. Welcome, Steve. Karishi will be presenting.
Tonight's request is a preliminary plaid for Parcel B of Civic Square. And Parcel B is one of three parcels of the Civic Square PAD, and we're located right here. This is Bullard Wash, we have Montevista, 150th Drive, and then Virginia. To the north, we have existing residential development within the Rio Paseo. To the southwest, we have existing commercial development within the market at Straeau Falls. Also to the southeast, we have Harkins. Parcel B is about 42 acres. It's about 107 acres total for all of the Civic Square PAD. But again, tonight, we're looking at just Parcel B for the preliminary plaid. And zoning, the PAD was adopted in 2019, designates Parcel B for residential use. It allows a mix of residential densities. And this exhibit here just shows how Parcel B, the context within the PAD, again, Parcel B here will have the subdivision, the residential subdivision here. And densities will go from lowest, adjacent to the existing single-family residential here across the street, and it'll transition to higher densities as we get closer to Parcel A, which will have the civic core area. Preliminary plaid will subdivide the property. Again, it's about 42 and a half acres. Proposal is for 290 lots, and within that 290 lots, we'll have three different lot types. We'll have a conventional single-family, 100 of those. Those will be about 45 feet wide, detached, single-family homes. Then we'll also have court homes, 70 of those. Those will be a little smaller, about 34 feet wide. And then the last product we have is about 120 townhomes, and those will be attached And this exhibit shows the basic design of the subdivision. Again, we have the transition of densities. Here are the 100 single-family lots. In the middle, we have the court homes, and then kind of wrapping around the south of the parcel, we'll have the townhome development. Within this development, all of the streets will be public. Only private ways will be the shared driveways that will access the townhomes and the court homes. We have open space here, about seven acres for the whole development. We'll have an active amenity here, as well as through this spine area here. We'll also have several connections to the Bullard Wash and all the existing amenities within that area. In reviewing this subdivision, staff, we did find it consistent with the Civic Square PAD. We did find it consistent with the city subdivision regulations. The Planning and Zoning Commission didn't consider this item at their December 4 meeting. There was no opposition voiced to the plaid. And staff and the commission, we are recommending approval subject to the six stipulations within the staff report. Mayor, that concludes my presentation. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Then I've asked especially tonight to take the motion by Councilmember Laura Tonno because she was on the City Center Committee, and so I think you were pregnant then, and how old is your child now?
She's 15.
Yes, so I wanted to give her a thank you for all the work that she did. So can I have a motion in a second to approve the preliminary plaid for Goodyear Civic Square Parcel B as attached here to subdividing 42.5 acres into 290 residential lots and 45 tracts generally located at the southwest corner of Virginia Avenue and 150th Drive, subject to stipulations? Do I hear that motion? Very happily moved. And I heard a second, okay, motion by Councilman Laura Tonno and a second by Councilman Campbell. All right, council, it's open for discussion. Councilman Hampton?
No, I'm excited to see this area start to get more and more developed, so looking forward to it. I don't have any questions, just looking forward to the next steps of this area developing. So thank you.
Councilman Laura Tonno?
I'm going to echo that, and I want to thank everybody's hard work. I know it took a whole team to get this to where we are today, and Globe and our partners. So great thanks for the vision and foresight from everybody who worked on this, because this is just, it's a long time in the making, and I think it will really change the dynamics in that area and the dynamics of the city. So thank you all very much.
Vice Mayor?
I had a conversation today with a development attorney regarding something else, but in that conversation, we talked about what's happening in the city, and one of the things that I mentioned was it is so great to have property owners who are willing to take the chance and who are willing to actually develop on some really unique products and opportunities, and this is a great example of one of those. So very excited. I appreciate the whole team coming together and making this a reality. It's a good buffer between the existing residential and what will be multifamily and more of a commercial site. So I think we're very consistent with planning benchmarks and planning realities, so I'm excited about it. I appreciate the effort.
Councilmember Cano?
I do have a question. I would like to know what the difference between the green court homes are and regular court homes.
Be sure your name, repeat your name and what your title is, please.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Thanks for having me here tonight. My name is Brian Greathouse with the law firm, Burton Crackiolo. My address is 702 East Osborne Road. Happy to bring this pre-plaid forward. It has been a long time. We've worked with Globe, now we're working with BB Living to implement the PAD plan that we brought before you all early this year. Yeah, it's a great question. The green court homes and the townhouses are all alley-loaded. The townhomes front out onto the street, and the green court homes front into each other with a green space in between. Just an area to talk to your neighbors and hang out a little bit.
I appreciate that. I don't think it shows so clearly on the map, and I wanted to make sure that that's what I understood it to be, because I think it is much more community-centric than just the traditional shared driveway. So thank you very much for that approach.
Thank you.
Before you just leave, make sure there's not a Councilman, Pizzillo?
I'm good.
You're good. All right, Councilman Campbell?
I'd like to thank everyone too, but I did meet with a group of homeowners today, and to this council, they are thrilled to death about the Civic Square area, and they are thrilled to death about the new recreation center. And they said for me to please thank you for your very careful planning, and they expect great things to come from starting these two projects where they are. So thank you for believing in us and stepping out and doing this.
On this side, any comments? Well, thank you. I was elected to build a city hall back in 2005, and I've been patient about this, but you know, maybe there was a reason for it, because the design and what we're going to have there and the location, I think far surpasses what we had in mind. And so, and then that land is turning into a wonderful park.
Wonderful.
That we so needed in that side of town. So please tell everybody thank you and how pleased we are.
Will do. Thank you.
All right, let's vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. All right, let's go to number 8 on business, to accept the 2018-2019 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Finance Manager Jared Askelson will present. Jared?
Good evening, Mayor Lord, members of the council. I'm here tonight to present to you the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for Fiscal Year 2019. Fiscal Year 2019 ran from July 1 of 2018 to June 30 of this year. We're going to talk about three topics tonight. First, we're going to start with answering questions about what's new with our CAFRA this year? What did the auditors think about our consolidated, our comprehensive annual financial report? And finally, what do the numbers say? So our story starts about 170 years ago with John Tyler. He was the vice president to William Henry Harrison, and he actually was the first vice president to ascend to the presidency when Harrison died about a month after his inauguration, becoming our 10th president. He actually died as a member of the Confederate House of Representatives, and as such is the only president that did not receive a state funeral from the United States. But important to our story tonight was that he was a strong advocate for the annexation of Texas into the Union. So strong an advocate that in 1846, when a small town decided to incorporate, they took his name, and Tyler, Texas was born, home of the Texas Rose Festival, as you can see from their logo, also where the Adopt a Highway program began back in 1985. And while they have 91 years of landfill space, which is very important for us, what's important is that a pipe company formed there in the mid-1930s, took the name of the town, Tyler Pipe Company, famous for their tie-seal compression gasket that's used around the world. In 1968, the Tyler Pipe Company was acquired by Saturn Industries, a conglomerate of many companies, but most importantly to us, they have a public sector software division. And in 1968, they actually changed their name from Saturn Industries to their most profitable division, which was the Tyler Pipe Company, becoming Tyler Technologies, as you see here. And the most important thing for us is that of their offerings today, they have the Tyler Munis software, which is our new financial software, which rolls us into what's new for this year. So with this CAFRA, we are using the new Tyler Munis software package to create our financial reports. We also have a new audit firm, Hinton Burdick, that we brought on this year. And we have two additional reporting requirements from the Governmental Accounting Standards Board that we also incorporated into the report. So what did the auditors think of our report? They importantly said in the independent auditor's report that there is an unmodified or clean opinion of our financial statements. Additionally, in the report on internal controls, they identified no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. So they liked our report and said that it fairly represents the financial condition of the city. So let's take a look at some numbers. First, we'll talk about net position. Now, net position is a number that is used by investors to compare the performance of the city against other private entities that also have potentially a net worth number that they compare it against. Well, for the last five years, you see our net position has been increasing, and in last- that's used around the world. In 1968, the Tyler Pipe Company was acquired by Saturn Industries, a conglomerate of many companies. But most importantly to us, they have a public sector software division. And in 1968, they actually changed their name from Saturn Industries to their most profitable division, which was the Tyler Pipe Company, becoming Tyler Technologies, as you see here. And the most important thing for us is that of their offerings today, they have the Tyler Munis software, which is our new financial software, which rolls us into what's new for this year. So, with this CAFER, we are using the new Tyler Munis software package to create our financial reports. We also have a new audit firm, Hinton Burdick, that we brought on this year. And we have two additional reporting requirements from the governmental accounting standards board that we also incorporated into the report. So, what did the auditors think of our report? They importantly said in the independent auditor's report that there is an unmodified or clean opinion of our financial statements. Additionally, in the report on internal controls, they identified no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. So, they liked our report and said that it fairly represents the financial condition of the city. So, let's take a look at some numbers. First, we'll talk about net position. Now, net position is a number that is used by investors to compare the performance of the city against other private entities that also have potentially a net worth number that they compare it against. Well, for the last five years, you see our net position has been increasing. And in last fiscal year, we increased it by $60 million to $795 million, which models the growth that we've seen in the city. And you can see that it's actually been increasing each year at a faster rate, increasing by 8.1% over the last year. Net position is rarely used in decision-making by governments, but fund balance is a number that we talk about a lot more, especially when we're going through the budget. And you can see here, our governmental funds, fund balance over the last five years also has been increasing. And you see a large increase from 2018 to 2019 where we're about $186 million in governmental funds, fund balance. But before we talk a little bit more about that, let's talk about different categories of fund balance. Because within that $186 million, we have multiple different types of fund balance. First, we have non-spendable items that are inventory or prepaid. So, these are things that we have on our shelf that aren't dollars, but they will be used in the next fiscal year, such as air filters, oil filters that we have on the shelf at our fleet area. Also prepaid expenses, so insurances possibly that we paid for in the prior year that carry on into the next year. The next category is actually our largest category, and that's the restricted fund balance. And you see, we have our bond funds, so the bonds that we've issued but not spent, like for our recreation campus that we'll be spending over the next couple of years, fall into the restricted category. Because restricted category items are those that have either a state law, a federal law, or in the case of our charter, our charter mandated reserve will sit in the restricted portion of fund balance. Next, we have our committed category. And in this case, we have our ballpark asset reserve sitting there because we have an outside agreement with other entities in order to keep the ballpark up in tip-top shape. Finally, we have our assigned categories. And here we find our other asset replacement reserves and also our contingency. And for fiscal year 2019, we added to the assigned amounts, the amounts that were adopted by council to be spent in this fiscal year. And the reason why we did that is previously we would report a larger unassigned fund balance, which really is anything not in one of these other categories. And that unassigned fund balance included items that were already approved by council in this fiscal year. So, to make this a little bit clearer on the unassigned fund balance, we included anything that was already adopted by council for use as of June 30th as an assigned item. So, the unassigned fund balance is truly dollars that aren't assigned for any other purpose. And with that, I'll break down the numbers. So, that $186 million, we have about $2.4 million in non-spendable, the inventories and prepaid. The restricted you see is almost half of the entire amount at $96 million. The reason for that is because you'll see large balances there for bond funds, for projects that we'll be spending down over the next couple of years, along with impact fee funds that again can only be used for certain capital projects. The committed, as I mentioned, that's the amount of our ballpark reserve. And then within that assigned amount, we have about $55 million that's assigned for the fiscal year 2020 budget to be used in the 2020 budget. That leaves an unassigned balance of $16.4 million at the end of fiscal year 2019. So, the three main points that we're going to come back to here, we had an unmodified opinion with no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. Our auditors liked our financial reports, and our financial position continues to improve. And with that, I'd like to thank a pipe company, a small town in Texas, and a President of the United States for their help in completing our 2019 CAFER. Any questions?
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
No? All right. Can I have a motion in a second to accept the 2018-2019 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Bazillo and a second by Councilman Hampton. Open for council discussion. Councilman Laura Tonell?
First of all, they said people with finance have no sense of humor. That was cute. Thank you and your team for all the hard work. Brandon, me, and Joe were on the audit committee, and it was just, they're just wonderful and get all the information out. It's a great group. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
No questions, just a thank you.
Councilman Bazillo?
Again, I want to echo what Councilmember Laura Tonell said. Very forthright in questions answered. We had a lot of discussion while we were in that meeting. I also like the way you presented. Short, sweet, to the point. The numbers are really easy to follow. Even non-accounters can understand what you put out there. So, again, I thank you for the presentation. And I guess also thanks to the former president for me.
Any other? A Texas person's not going to say anything over there? I said Texas, Wally.
Oh, Texas, no.
No? Well, I thank you for your creative presentation, and I think a little history lesson helps, especially in this day and age. All right, council, the discussion is done. Let's vote. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. The next item on business is consider approving the expenditure authority for the fire station 181 and the fire station 186 and off-site, and off-site construction. Deputy Fire Chief Tom Cole presenting. Tom?
Evening, Mayor and council. Joining me this evening is Diana Williamson. She's from Engineering, our senior project manager for the fire station projects. Tonight, we're requesting your consideration in authorizing expenditures to allow two fire stations to progress from the design phase into construction. Fire Station 186, located in the Australia communities, planned to open in late 2020. And replacement station 181, located on 143rd Avenue near Celebrate Lifeway, is planned for early 2021. So, this is our opportunity to give you an update on those projects. And here we go. The design process for these stations has been an inclusive one, with fire command staff and firefighters working hand in hand with our design team, with folks from engineering, IT, facilities, and other essential stakeholders. The first thing I'd like to point out is that these new stations are designed to follow our existing processes. They're designed for how we live and work in fire stations. The goal is design stations that can be built and kept clean without interfering with normal daily operations. So, this slide shows our zone separation. The blue area is the living and business area of the stations, and that's the cleanest area you'll find in the station. The yellow areas are transition zones, and those are zones where firefighters get clean from the exposures that they endure on fires and other emergency scenes. The orange and red areas are areas where we clean and park apparatus, and those are inherently the most contaminated areas of a fire station. I might use the word dirty from time to time. We keep our fire stations clean, but that is the most contaminated part of the station. So, for zone separation, the way we behave around a fire station is dictated by what zone we're in. For example, a firefighter is never going to come back to the station from a fire in their firefighter gear and walk into the clean area of a station. We have procedures in place to make sure we avoid trying to, try not to contaminate that clean area. We plan our actions around the exposures we receive, and these stations are designed to make those actions more efficient. Our HVAC system is based on this zone system. The highest pressure area is in that blue area, and the intention is to pressurize the station in a way that pushes any contaminants that we might encounter out of the cleanest area of the station. So, the air transitions from the living and business area, clean area, into the yellow transition area, orange, and then outside of the station. Finally, on this slide, by utilizing very durable and cleanable materials, especially in those transition zones, these stations allow for really quick cleanup, very effective, efficient cleanup. These materials are also more durable, which should make them last longer and make our station more valuable. So, firefighter safety and well-being. Working with DFDG and CR Architects, we've integrated several training areas into these stations. Each station has a training tower, multiple window openings for ladder drills, and anchor points to secure equipment to. An important component of this design is to provide the crews with training opportunities regardless of how busy they are. Interior spaces are designed to match our procedures and the functions that firefighters are required to perform as they live and work. Station security and firefighter safety are important components of these designs. And then finally, on this slide, the interior spaces, including materials and colors, are selected through a collaborative process with our firefighters. So, we've been working together with the end users throughout this entire project. So, another really good reason for building training opportunities into these stations is to keep them in their home station while they train, instead of them leaving to another area. It's really important to us that crews be available in their stations to run calls as much as possible, and these training designs afford that opportunity. Designing facilities that are welcoming, safe, and that create points of civic pride within the community are important goals. The front door of each station is easily identifiable. It creates a welcoming environment for the public. We do strongly recommend that our citizens and folks visiting Goodyear call 911 when they have an emergency. But we want our neighbors and other citizens of Goodyear to know where the front door is. If they want to meet their firefighters or if they have a question for us, we want them to feel welcome at a fire station. They are secure facilities, that's important, but we do want to be part of the Finally, on this slide, using materials and colors that complement the neighborhood create fire stations that blend into and enhance surrounding community. So, it's important for us, 186, for example, uses the color palette from the Montecito community. So, it's important that we feel like we're part of the, part of the neighborhood. And I need to mention also on this slide that the Arts and Culture Commission selected Joe Tyler to be our public artist. Joe's working on two sculptures for us. We don't have the final designs. We have representation, silhouette representations in the material you're going to see as we move forward. But we're very excited to be working with Joe, and we have collaborated with him on the designs. So, Fire Station 186, this is the site plan. It's located in the Australia community on Willis Road, just east of Rainbow Valley Road. It's on a 3.9 acre lot, and it's close to the entrances for both Montecito and Canomia. Here's the floor plan for Station 186. It's a two-bay, 12,587 square foot building. It has enough dorm rooms for an engine company and for an ambulance crew when that time comes, when it comes time for that. And I'd just like you to take a look at the schematic, and then I'm going to move on. But the core of the station's important to take note of, and then we'll talk more about it when we're on the next station. This is an artist rendering of Station 186 off Willis Road, just to the west. And then this is the view from just to the east. Again, that's silhouette of the artist rendering. The designs are still in progress. Moving on. Station 181, it's located on 143rd Avenue between Van Buren and Celebrate It's on four-point acres of land, 4.8 acres of land, excuse me. And here's the floor plan for 181. It's a three-bay, 15,855 square foot design. It has room to house an engine company, ambulance crew, and it's also configured to handle any fire truck in our fleet. It's important to note here that the basic layout of the core of the station, the heart of the station, is identical to that of 186. So, what we've tried to do is create a common design that's scalable depending on where the station's located in our communities. So, I'll take an opportunity here. Here's our training tower, one of the training props we're very proud of. This side of the station, on the opposite side of the bays, is intended to handle our dirty stuff. When we have dirty firefighter turnout gear, this is where that goes. It never gets over into the clean side of the station. When our firefighters need to get cleaned up from going on a fire or another emergency call, this is the corridor they'll go through. And here we have the whole area in the heart of the station where they get cleaned up. We try and work hard to segregate these areas from the areas where they conduct business and where they live. That's the key here. In areas for fitness, kitchen, ubiquitous in fire stations, dining area, and then our dorm rooms. We're very excited about these designs as they really do fit the procedures that we follow every day. So, here's a look at Station 181 from 143rd Avenue, just to the south. And here's one, this would be like in the parking lot, so just west of 143rd Avenue in the parking lot. It distinctly shows the front door of the fire station and those design elements. Again, the public art is silhouette representation. One of the things we're also, that we also like a lot about this space is it gives us an opportunity, should we decide to conduct a memorial service sometime in the future, this was a space that's created for that purpose. So, at this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Diana Williamson to talk about project phasing and to talk about our recommendation to council. Thank you.
Welcome, Diane.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. So, the project phasing currently for Station 186 is, we just hit a milestone and completed the design documents, and our designer architect, Dick and Fritchie, design group just recently submitted for permit. So, the completion of design documents milestone for December has been met. We anticipate starting construction in March 2020. And as Chief, Deputy Chief Cole mentioned earlier, we anticipate occupancy in late 2020. Station 181 is second in the order. Therefore, the completion of design documents is anticipated January 2020, with a construction start of April 2020 and occupancy in early 2021. And so, what we would like to request is the approval of an expenditure authority for all the remaining fees and costs for the remaining design, construction, completion of related off-site improvements for Fire Station 186, up to the spending authority of $8,274,300. And for replacement Fire Station 181, up to the spending authority of $10,474,233.
That does conclude our presentation. I would like to take a second just to thank the department directors and staff that have helped us get to this point. It's been a collaborative effort and a lot of work, but we're very, very happy to reach this milestone, and also our design team, DFDG and Core Construction. So, we're here for you.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Can I have a motion in a second to approve the maximum expenditure authority of $8,270,300 for Fire Station 186 and $10,474,233 for the Fire Station 181, for all remaining fees and costs for the design, construction-related off-site improvements, equipment, and fixtures? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I heard a motion by, that's appropriate, Vice Mayor Stiff, and a second by Councilman Hampton. Open for council discussion. Councilman Laura Tonell?
Again, I want to thank you. I want to thank the team from Engineering and the fact that, you know, this was a collaborative effort to go in and talk to the people that are going to live and work there. And it looks like we're going to be on the cutting edge of technology because with all the cancer and all the unknowns there, I'm really glad to see that, you know, I guess we've thought of everything that we can make to make it a safe building for our people that we can. So, I'm, let's get it started. So, great job. Thank you.
Any other, Councilman Bazillo?
Yeah, I do like the design and, again, to make sure it's safe with all the things going on with cancer, that we have those safe zones in there. Can you just explain to me real quick what the difference between the 2.2 million between the two buildings are in general?
So, on Station 181, or 186, if you, and we can go back in the slides if you'd like us to, it is a two apparatus bay station.
Okay.
And it has two, two less dorm rooms than, than the others. So, it's smaller in square footage. And hence the reason why there's a cost difference.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hampton?
Is there, I said, thank you for putting this all together. I think it'll be really good. I'm looking forward to them being completed. I know we definitely need it in the city. I also appreciate the artwork that we have attached to it as well. I think that'll be nice, nice for the community as well as waypoints or different added benefit to the community. And then also, is this- And then also, is this, are these costs here, do they include contingency as well, built into it, if we run into anything that's unforeseen with the construction?
Yes, so, to date, we've done a great job in the estimating for budget and the value engineering process with the tedious unknowns of, you know, the industry. And to date, the cost estimates that we've received from the C-Mar contractor, Core Engineering, we have been under budget, and we are very confident that we will remain under budget through the GMP process.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Any other comments? Councilman Campbell?
I've got a quick question. Chief, for 181, is it, is the new one bigger than the old one we're replacing? It looks like it's definitely more functionable for the crews.
Mayor, Councilmember Campbell, they are somewhat comparable in size. If you remember, old Station 181 originally housed fire administration.
Right, oh, that's right.
And that functionality doesn't exist in this new station, because obviously, we're here at GMC. So it is slightly smaller than old 181, but it's much more functional, as you mentioned, and designed for the way we do business in today's day and age.
Well, we're excited, it looks beautiful, and I'm just glad that the crews like them, because we're building it really for them, because that's their home. And we want to make sure that we afford them all we can to keep them safe and happy. So, thank you.
Any other? I'd just like to thank staff for their planning, the city manager for her planning, the fire department. How many cities build two fire stations within just a year of each other? I think it says a lot, and we're going to need it, we're growing so rapidly. So, we look forward to the groundbreaking and to the opening of it. So, we're going to vote on this. So, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, congratulations. The last item on business, consider adopting a city code amendment for shared mobility devices. Planner two, Christian Williams, will be presenting. Christian?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Today, we are going to discuss the next steps following your work session conversation and direction on shared mobility devices, or electric kick scooters and e-bikes. As a recap, during our September work session, staff presented this slide showcasing our current state and our future options. It was at that time, council provided direction to create a shared mobility device program, similar to the one shown in Phase Two Long-Term Approach. So, provided is staff's recommendation on how we move forward with your prescribed policy. As you will recall, the state approved a revision to ARS Title 28. This established a framework and standard terms for these types of devices. But when it comes to the staging, the state law did not address the concept of parking and staging of devices in the right-of-way, meaning it did not say how cities should regulate companies that drop devices off on the sidewalks or in other areas. On the city's end, in order to create a formal program, staff is proposing we amend Chapter 13, the transportation section, of our existing city code. This amendment will add a new section related to the regulation of the shared mobility devices, as well as add the ability for the city to create a more formalized program. Over the course of the next two slides, I will briefly describe what is proposed in our ordinance and its impact on this future program. Before I do so, I want to thank Rorick and Darcy for their diligence and assistance in crafting this new proposed ordinance. This ordinance provides a clear definition for what shared mobility devices are, and refers to them in the same terminology that the state statute does. This adds consistency and clarity. It also defines what shared transportation companies, such as Bird and Lime, are. The ordinance provides the city manager the ability to create a shared mobility license, and it allows her staffer, designee, to issue licenses through her program. It also allows fees to be collected through a future council resolution. The ordinance requires operators to apply for a temporary license, which may be obtained through the city. As a condition of receiving that license, they must adhere to the terms and conditions of our future program. The ordinance creates rules for the parking of these devices, which is an area we closely evaluated in order to ensure the city is set up for success. They may be parked in bike parking areas, and in addition, may be parked in public right-of-ways, so long as they do not impede vehicle travel, ADA travel, pedestrian travel, driveways, doorways, views of public arts, and signs. It allows Julie, through her designees, to add additional parking for activities such as special events. And it allows for parking in bicycle racks in commercial centers and apartment complexes, provided the owner has not restricted those uses. It creates spacing requirements and maximums, so no more than four devices can be parked within 200 feet of another grouping of devices. Unlawfully parked devices must be moved within a specific timeframe. And as far as equipment requirements, the ordinance states that if a device is ridden at night, front and rear lighting is required. In addition, the ordinance discusses noise and proper braking. The ordinance gives Goodyear PD the ability to impound devices that have been abandoned, and it gives them the ability to move, remove, or impound devices that are left in a dangerous manner. If the ordinance is violated, it allows the city to process civil traffic violations, and it allows the city to issue penalties to the shared transportation device owners and the companies. And it allows us to cite individuals who engage in reckless driving. The goal of this ordinance is to ensure that riders and companies operate in a safe manner, while providing the city with the flexibility and ensuring that the safe environment for all users and residents alike. So what are the next steps if council chooses to adopt this ordinance? The ordinance provides the framework and allows staff to create the application for interested shared transportation companies. This would allow us to obtain information about the companies and learn how they plan to operate. For example, how they plan to provide a 24-hour staff customer service number and educate riders on safe operations. We then create a temporary operating license. This license would house additional rules that the company must follow, such as where and when they can be ridden, how often they are inspected for safety, maximum speeds on hills, such as on Australia Parkway between Hillside Drive and King Ranch. And it allows us the flexibility to amend the rules or revoke license based on real-world performance. It would also add the company's consent to penalties and fees, as well as require certain levels of indemnification. As a part of this process, we would also establish those fees for program participation. So now, having heard this presentation, staff is recommending that council consider adopting Ordinance 2019-1459, which will amend City Code Chapter 13 Transportation, and add a new Article 13-6, Shared Mobility Devices. And that's the end of my presentation, so Mayor, if you have any questions, be happy to answer them as you lead your discussion.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak, which I think is nothing, there isn't anybody on the left, so. Will the city clerk please read Ordinance Number 2019-1459 by title only?
Adopt Ordinance Number 2019-1459, amending Chapter 13, traffic of the Goodyear City Code to include Article 13-6, Shared Mobility Devices, to allow for shared mobility device program temporary participant licenses. Parking regulations require equipment impoundment penalties and sentencing, providing for corrections, severability, and an effective date.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, a second, to approve Ordinance Number 2019-1459? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion. Thank you. I heard a motion, Vice Mayor Stiff, and a second from Councilman Cano, open for council discussion. Vice Mayor?
Christian, and everyone, thanks for getting this done. I know this came up, I'm going to say a year ago, but it might have been longer than that, but better to do it right and to get it all done at one time than to keep coming back time after time, so thanks for getting that done.
Councilwoman Basillo?
You know, Christian, I know when we had the earlier discussion, we looked about hold harmless the city, you know, from an insurance policy standpoint, is any of that in this ordinance?
So that portion is not in the ordinance, but where we add flexibility to add that would be in a program. So the ordinance will establish that Julie can create a program, and as part of that program and receiving that license agreement, we would make them sign off on things like indemnification and insurance liability.
Yeah, so my only concern is, before we move forward, or at least in licensing, I want to make sure that's in there, because, you know, there's a lot of things that can go wrong with those things, and I want to make sure that we're held harmless, so whatever it takes to make sure we have the insurance policy to cover that. I think that's important, that that's in place as you license these people, I really do.
Councilman Hampton?
So I know this is for shared, but maybe I think I wasn't at the work session, but is this also, is there an ordinance also that covers if you're not part of a rideshare program and you own your own?
The state law would cover that portion.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Cano?
I know we talked a lot about concerns about people coming down the hill at Australia, and the possibility of geofencing, is that included in this?
We do have an option in the program that we're working on right now to add geofencing, but one thing we were looking at in language is, companies that rent out those devices would have to have the ability to regulate the speed of those devices, so we could put something in place similar to how Phoenix says, where if you're going through a part of the community we don't want you particularly in, the speed of that device must be able to slow down. So we could say something like, on Australia Parkway between Hillside Drive and King Ranch, the device must slow to five miles per hour, 10 miles per hour, something like that.
Okay, well, because not only we have the hill, but then you've got railroad tracks and MC-85, I mean, it's a potentially very dangerous exchange, whereas, as we're developing a city core, it seems that that's really the appropriate use for something like this. So with the limit of four, with all our multifamily housing conceivably being there, is that going to limit access, or will it be hard to enforce? I mean, four for some of these huge complexes that are building seems pretty minimum number.
So what we wrote into the ordinance was that if there was a bike rack at a commercial center or a multifamily center, those bicycle racks could have more than four. That's an appropriate place for them, unless the property owner says, "We don't want those here." And in addition to that, Julie would be able to have a designee such as Rebecca, or the chief, say, "Hey, this is a special area, we want to allow extra parking," so it allows for us to have that flexibility.
Thank you for all the work you've put into this. You've obviously done a lot of research and put together a nice presentation.
Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell?
So if we don't pass this, we're passing it because we know it's coming, right? Is that basically why we're doing it now? Because I really don't see people, I don't know where they're going to ride these, unless we're going to run around the city and put a bike lane in everywhere, on every single road, so that they can safely ride, I think we're going to have issues of people getting hurt.
We haven't heard any indication that they are specifically coming to Goodyear, but the goal of this ordinance was to prepare in the event that they do come to Goodyear, so that we're ready.
But we would still have to approve the license, we'd still have to give them authority to come into our city.
Absolutely. The next step would be creating that program, the application process, so that we can vet them. And one thing we did specifically in this license was we call it a temporary license, so in the event they aren't abiding by our rules, or the real-world situation, how that evolves, it gives us the ability to restrict that or update the rules to make sure that it's a safe environment.
Because I really can see the kids up in Australia coming down the hill to go to the new rec center, if they can't get there, and we have no transportation for them. So, we may need to look into putting bike paths all the way up if they're not all the way up there. So, just a thought, Christian. You open one door, and then three more open, too, dear.
I can take note of that, thank you.
Anything else from council? Councilman Hampton?
Just a clarification, I think you might already covered this, so if I am the owner of these shared mobility devices, and one of my device comes into, someone rides it out of Avondale to Goodyear, then it automatically becomes under this ordinance. If it falls, if it's across the city lines, then that company has to go make sure that device was covered, get the permit, and everything else probably beforehand.
Yes, and the way I've seen it handled in some other communities is those devices know when they leave a jurisdiction that they're not in, if you will, but any citizen could report that that device has been left, but since they're geofenced, since the batteries don't last that long, oftentimes, those companies do come and pick them up within 24 hours. So, that's one fallback we have.
Okay, thank you.
This is my turn. I was a little apprehensive on the entire program, and I'm going to tell you why. It's because of all the times the city's being sued. Somebody hit a sign, a black and white sign on one of the roads, okay? So, just recently, somebody else did something else, and was definitely, in my viewpoint, they were at the wrong, but that didn't make any difference. We got sued, and we end up paying the money for that. So that is the part that, how can we close that and make it tighter, so that can't happen? Because I can just see someone riding down the hill from Australia, some kid, I mean, if they can go in and shoot kids in the schools, they can hop on a bike or whatever the scooter is and ride down that hill. They have no fear, they don't think anybody is going to touch them, and so I just think it's the thought behind it anymore of some of the things that are taking place in our community.
You make a good point, and in the, we could also add age restrictions in that program. Some cities say, if you're under the age of 18, you can't ride, so that would help with some of that.
And are we going to have the inspectors that are going to inspect this frequently? Because this is a movement.
It is.
They're moving all around, and so, you know, I'm going to vote for it tonight because of our age group of our community is 37, and I know that the young people want this, but boy, I'm going to speak loudly if we start having problems with it. Do we have any recourse as it goes on, if it's absolutely a disaster, you know, that we have great intent? I'm asking the lawyer that.
Madam Mayor, as Christian referred to earlier, we're approaching this as a temporary license for these companies when they come into the city, and the license agreement, I've seen a draft Christian's already put together, it's pretty in-depth and detailed as to what the requirements are for a company to operate within the city. And if they're not meeting their obligations, then we have the ability to revoke the license, and they would no longer be able to operate in the city.
Right, well, could they be sued instead of the city?
Well, I'm sure they probably would be, and then we would get sued as well. One of the, as Councilmember Basillo asked earlier, one of the issues would be indemnification, and in the draft program license agreement, there is an indemnification provision, so they'd have to indemnify the city, as well as provide insurance, and list the city as an additional insurer. So, we'd try to, you know, contain the liability that way. The one positive about this is, you are putting program requirements on these companies to come into the city, rather than just have a city come in and drop the devices with no regulations. So, it is an attempt to build in some protections for the city.
So, are the police going to be involved in this? This is going to take manpower from that department? I mean, are we going to have, you know, on the bike, riding around and finding these kids, or are they going to have a scooter to catch up with them? I don't know, these are the things, some of the things that really concern me. So I want to make sure that the budget is open to help the police department, if in fact, this becomes a real heavy effort on their part. So, thank you very much. All right, so, discussion is finished, so roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tonno?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell? Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember Basillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Okay. Look, 706, great. All right, so let's go down to the information. Does council have any comments, commendation reports on current events? No? Oh, you want something? Okay, so I'm going to open it up for those that have a question to the city manager. Go ahead, Bill.
Tried to get you before the meetings. We've recently moved to a different part of the city, so now I have the joy of listening to the racetrack that's in the county off of Camelback. I'm just curious, since most of the staff, with the exception of Rorick, nobody was here when we encountered that event, you know, predominantly.
I was here.
Well, I'm said staff. Are we checking up on the noise level requirements that they have in place? How do we follow up on that? Obviously, nothing that we'll get now, and it's not an urgent matter, so when we get to answering that, but I'm just curious how we're keeping them within the parameters that have been set by where they're at.
Thank you, I'd be glad to look into that and report back to council.
Thanks.
All right, next, Sherri?
Two things. First of all, I want to thank Parks and Rec for the wonderful Goodyear glows, unfortunately, weather, but it's still, there are kids out there that, even raining, it's like, they got no line, so they were loving it. And then I just want to let everyone know, I did ask the city manager a question earlier today, just so everybody knows what I asked of her, that Phoenix is voting on Wednesday for the tax on the Uber Lyft, and Uber Lyft this morning came out with letters that said, I heard on the news that they're going to pull out of Sky Harbor, with Super Shuttle closing down. I had several people contact me, especially up in Australia, Canamia area, that said... that said, they're stressed because they're leaving for the holidays and a taxi from the airport to the Australia community is, I mean, it's a huge expense. And so is to leave your car. So, we had a lot of people who, we have an Uber driver up there who always, it's kind of like a lady that always services that area, tries to always be available. And we have a lot of retirees and people who don't want to drive the freeway. So, I don't know what the proper cause or way to get the message to. Maybe they're listening today, the city of Phoenix, this is a regional asset and you're going to hurt our citizens as well. So, I, I don't know what it is. I let our city manager know my concerns and I don't know how we can address this, but it is a concern for our residents because that's our airport too.
It's another transportation that's going away.
And it's going to be cut out for our citizens to get there. We don't have light rail. We don't, you know, you're going to have to park your car. We have older people who don't want to park a car or don't drive. So, I, I'm at a loss to see how to fix that, you know? Without, we don't want to butt into another city, but then it does affect us. So, I just want to let you know what I asked the city manager.
Does the blue truck come up there, you know?
No, they went out of, they're going out of business end of the year.
No.
Super Shuttles closing down.
The shuttle, yeah.
July, or January 31st, they are out of business. So, if you took them to the airport, you will get a refund for your return trip, but you cannot take them home. So, that's why people are stressed.
Well, I tell you, I, you know, I smell a small business. Some citizens out there said, "Start a business and..."
That was Uber Lyft. That's what it was.
I know, but I'm talking a private one. Like, we have them in Pebble Creek. They're just people want to work.
Then they're going to charge them the tax too.
Yeah. Well, that's a shame.
Any questions? Yes.
I'm sorry. And I'm not going to talk much about it because I'm sure the departments are going to talk later on, maybe in January. This is our last meeting before January? Well, we did, we did the Goodyear shop with a cop and it was fabulous. The children were wonderful and it was so well-executed. And Santa Claus came in the sheriff's helicopter, which was wonderful. Everybody thought it was so fun. And the shopping spree with Walmart on Estrella Parkway went, it was excellent. Everything was wonderful. The kids were darling. And then Chief Luizy and I and his fire crew ran over to Pebble Creek and I have no idea how many presents we filled, but we filled an entire truckload. I have no idea, but it looked like hundreds to me and bicycles. And, and the fill-in-need did their delivery on the 14th. And I, this is the first year I've missed in six, seven years, but I was in the parade, which was a lot of fun. And the fill-in-need was committee, which I'm on, was very grateful that there were so many toys donated this year, more than ever before, that they didn't have to go shopping like crazy to fill these wonderful little wish lists from these darling kids. So, to this great community of, of not only Pebble Creek, but all of Goodyear, thank you so much for opening your hearts and, and helping us take care of, of children who deserve to be helped during this holiday season.
Well, Molly, I have to thank Pebble Creek.
Oh, yes. They were wonderful.
And I have to thank you and your committee. It's been the same ladies every year, year after year, that make that sacrifice. And your organizational ability is exceptional. So, congratulations. Any other, any other comments? I, I just want one comment. It's holiday time and we have some time off. I just wish you a blessed holiday and a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and all of that. And say to you all, great job this year. Expecting the same from you next year. So, just be ready. So, that's mine. I'm going to turn over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to add to Councilmember Campbell's comments on the fill-in-need and give a brief recap. On Saturday, December 14th, holiday presents and food boxes were delivered to 18 families in need during this holiday season. This year, we also worked with Santa for seniors and provided presents for 50 Goodyear senior residents. And a special thank you to those businesses, community partners and employees that help support the fill-in-need program. Baseball, 2020 Spring Training Single Ticket Online Sales Have Begun. The Goodyear Ballpark Ticket Office and Team Shop will open on Thursday, January 9th at 4:00 p.m. And our spring training opening day will be held on Saturday, February 22nd at 1:05 when the Cleveland Indians take on the Cincinnati Reds. City offices will be closed for Christmas and New Year's Day, Wednesday, December 25th, and then Wednesday, January 1st. Emergency fire and police services will operate as normal and city offices will reopen at 8:00 a.m. the following day. There will be no trash recycling bulk service on the holiday. The services will resume the day after the holiday on a modified schedule. And of course, wishing everyone a wonderful and safe holiday season.
Thank you. The next meeting will be a special meeting on January 6th, 2020. Oh, my goodness. At 5:00, followed by our regular meeting at 6:00 p.m. Before I adjourn this, I, I hope you like these every year, but I baked my grandmother's, you know, we're Greeks, karabietas. And so, I bake it as a thank you gift for the work you've done. So, I, I hope nobody gets an upset stomach over anything like that. So, anyway, no further business, and they happen to be sitting on the table out there, all raft, ready to go home. So, no, being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.